And Slan, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mayor sends his regrets that he could not be with us tonight. So there won't seem no school committee chair report. The resource committee met on Tuesday, the 11th. Mostly we went over just old business and we talked about money that would be coming from the city and some of the, how it was going to be used for school buildings. School building needs. We met on Thursday. We approved the minutes of the September 23rd, 2019 meeting and we held an excellent meeting with the Crocker Field Restoration Committee with Rick Kazanjin, who was president, Mike Pellon, and John Cordio. And we went over a lot of the needs of Crocker Field and what we have been doing since 2004 and where we need to go in the future. We did a lot of discussion on the work that we did on the field this year so to get it in good shape for football for this coming season. And it looks good going ahead in the future that we will be meeting again on a regular basis with the School Facilities Committee and Crocker Field and putting a line item in the budget to help maintain Crocker Field. We need to maintain Crocker Field and Crocker Field Restoration Committee is not a maintenance committee, it's a restoration committee, so we're trying to restore Crocker Field to where it once was. Since our inception in 2004, we have, the Crocker Field Restoration Committee has raised and spent $2,111,966 on Crocker Field, so...
That's its own entity, Crocker Field Restoration Committee. I think saying that might be good for people to understand that that's money they've raised independently and really just the guardians of the field. It's really a great organization.
Anybody wants to send checks to Crocker Field Restoration Committee? Send them to Fitchburg High School, care of the athletic department. It all helps.
Could I make a comment on that or some way? Any idea how that compares to other cities maintaining their football fields? Leominster, Gardner?
A lot of cities are different. Fitchburg, Crocker Field is under the jurisdiction of the school department and theoretically, Crocker Field could be taken to be used for a school building site. And that, I'm sure that will never happen, but in the eyes of the state and people who give us money, we don't qualify for a lot of grants that a lot of school systems have, such as Leominster, Doyle Field is under the Doyle Field Commission. They have been able to receive actually millions of dollars in state grants to maintain and upgrade the field where they have a turf field. Gardner has a turf field. Most, Fitchburg, and I, there's one other one in the mid-watch league that does not have a turf field. We're the only ones that have a grass field.
No.
But we are continuing to work on it, to maintain it and upgrade it. We're, next thing we're working on is new lights for Crocker Field.
Pursuant to what you're saying, why are they, whoever they are that can get grants, why can they get them and we can't again?
Because it's basically a school, it's basically a classroom, Crocker Field.
So Alva Crocker left it to the Fitchburg schools, right? So we operate under different rules than like the Doyle Commission that controls Doyle Field. It's just, it's one of those difficult regulatory setups that make it hard for us to get those kinds of funds.
And do we want it to stay that way or is there any...
It's not going to change.
It's not going to change.
We've looked at, we've looked at different ways, maybe to...
To make ourselves...
Like turn it over to the city, but that couldn't happen. Then it would no longer be under the jurisdiction of the school department and...
And that worries us, right? Because then the city can make decisions.
Well, are there other cities in our position in the state and have, we're unique?
Not to my knowledge.
We're unique?
Very, very unique. This is a very, it's a jewel in the city.
Oh, it absolutely is, but might we not ask for an exception or some kind of a way to, though we don't turn it over to anybody else, but still we be regarded?
Mr. Stevens.
Sally.
I was going to say, I know that Jean and Mr. Stevens have served on this committee for a really long time, so all of these questions, I think, have been explored by Crocker Field Restoration Committee. And I would urge you actually to go to one of their meetings to learn more of the specifics about how this works. But I'm sorry, I interrupted Jean.
No.
I'm no longer on that committee, but I can just say from my time on it, that was a major question, you know? How do we get around this? How do we fund what every other district around us has been able to do, which is turf? Like at first, there was a question if turf fit into the historical nature of the field and we can do that, we can have turf. And I was just, I was really excited listening to them because I feel like when I was on that committee, we all were kind of feeling like there's no way forward, but these guys have all really, and you have all put a plan together that I wouldn't be surprised in the next few years that we'd be talking about turf at some point.
I would think we would be talking, well, we're going to continue to talk turf and because all of the, all of the schools around here have it, we cannot host a lot of different meets. The big thing, the big thing is with our, it's basically a football field now and in the past, what we would, you know, girls' field hockey and soccer. We're going to try, next year, we've improved the field enough that hopefully in September and early October, we can get some of our other girls' hockey and field hockey and soccer and boy's soccer onto the field to use it once or twice so that we'll, but...
They were great because they reminded us, you know, the whole mission of Crocker Field and Alva Crocker's vision was that every child, every school child in Fitchburg would have the opportunity to be on that field. And certainly with the relays, all the kids get down there and that's really great, but they, they were really good to point out that really it's just been football and only, not even to like play like in practice because the team can't even practice that, practice on that field. They've only allowed it to basically be able to be used for the home games that they had this year. And all these other kids are missing out, you know, kids who would love to play under the lights and I think, but they have that vision on the Crocker Field Restoration Committee and I think what, you know, we can do our part that we can manage with our budget to, you know, maintain it. But I think there's a really great, exciting vision right now on that commission.
I think so. We're, you know, continuing to work and continue to fix things at Crocker Field. Go down and see some of the things that we've done. Our monument section that's down there that we, and we have the new scoreboard and the light that's lighting up the monument section. John Cordio put the FHS in the back in there and I'll tell you, we work so hard and thanks to, we have Coach DeGronimo here tonight also. And Coach doesn't let the kids walk from the clubhouse across the field. That's how protective they are of that field. And hopefully, we're going to get it well-used on Thanksgiving Day and looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Yep. Any more questions, Crocker Field? Okay.
Oh, and the Long Joe roof.
Oh, oh, yeah, I'm going to move along. Thank you, Jean. We talked about the Crocker MSBA project update and Bob and Craig have submitted that proposal and that's been submitted. The Long Joe roof is completed, everything is all, we're all set. Yay! We are now working on the MSBA Accelerator Repairs for South Street, which will be a boiler in one of the buildings and the roof on the main building. An OPM contract has been signed with EDM Designers and Craig is also looking at the reimbursement calculations that we will get back. We talked about the school security assessment update. We talked about the lights at Fitchburg High School. I continue to ask Mr. Peterson about them and he said that they're looking at it still. They think they're probably going to have to take down a pole and pull some of the wires, find out where those outside lights, where the breakdown is, so we're continuing to work on that.
You said you talked about the security updates. Can you inform us on that?
Yeah, Craig, little security update on the...
So final reports have been submitted to us at central office and we'll be...
Can you update us on, on any of the updates that there will be or the improvements or new things or...
Yep, so part of our proposals moving forward, the projects will be to expand some of the areas noted in the security audit as far as removal, brush around buildings, updating security systems, surveillance cameras, and really building a culture of security. It was the real main emphasis from the audit, that this is a part of all of our responsibility. It's just, it's not just hardening the buildings, but it's also building out this culture for all of us to take building and security very seriously.
I've got a point of order. I'd like to ask that we skip ahead down to item number seven, which is the superintendent's report, and we have special guests who've been very patient, so, sorry, Mr. Stevens, check.
That's okay, no. Do we have a, that was the final motion, have a second on, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have a report for...
Huh? Okay.
No.
Okay.
Do you have any report for policy here?
Okay, yep, yep. Thank you, thank you. Retreat tonight.
Ryan, tell me I could say encore. Encore!
Fine, so can we spread out a little bit and we'll do, you've got a friend, please? Yeah, just spread out a little. Did, just spread out a little, please.
While you're, while you're setting up, I would like to say that the band and Cabasur well-represented the high school at the Veterans Day Ceremony on Monday, the 11th, playing a few numbers and playing all the songs for the different military armed forces with singing with the International Veterans Choir as well. I was very proud to see them all there and they did a wonderful job.
One, a two, oh, oh, two.
That was sublime.
Love the bling.
That was sublime, that was great.
Do you need them anymore or...
Can they enter our lives, our private lives?
I know, it's my job every day.
Well, I know where we can see them next.
Yes, you can indeed, so I can just have them. The next time that you'll be able to see the band perform will be Sunday at Leominster High School for the annual breakfast for the bands. This is an event that's been going on for almost 30 years, put on by both rotaries of Fitchburg and Leominster. All of the proceeds from the event are split 50-50 between the Fitchburg High School Band and the Leominster Music Programs. So tickets are only eight dollars, kids under eight eat for free. It's all-you-can-eat breakfast, so I think that we're going to be playing on the half hours. Come wearing red so we can drown them.
Could I just say, because I have been to the competitions this year, you guys have been so impressive and you're just wonderful to watch. I liked that you even got into that, I saw Sean do it. But the movements were really cool this year. I especially loved your backstrokes for the Little Mermaid, but, so this has been four years that I've watched the band perform and, I mean, every year it's great. This year, you outdid everything that, you know, you've just been wonderful, so I'm going to miss the band when I, my senior graduates.
I mean, you don't have to graduate too.
You guys are so wonderful and I, I just know you're headed for years and years of greater success, like as, you've just been great.
Jeanie, I graduated 61 years ago and I'm still here.
Okay. We'll have to come and watch the competitions. You all should get to see these competitions if you've never been because they're really fun.
Can we just really quickly have, I know that the camera moves back and forth, but if every, if every student could just say their name out loud and what year they are, I think our viewers at home would really love to know who you are.
We start.
You first, go.
Hi, my name is Deanna Bailey and I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Stevena Moore, I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Asher Goodbell, I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Stephenson, I'm a ninth grader.
I'm Emma Burgo and I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Sean DeGronimo, I'm 11th grade.
I'm Jimane Moore, I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Charlesy Michael, I'm in 10th grade.
I'm Riley Tebow and I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Isabel Leota and I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Jose Luis Rodriguez and 11th grade.
I'm Ryan Matthew, I'm a senior.
I'm Elise Pierce, I'm a senior.
I'm Ethan Loret, I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Naiya Muska, I'm, I'm next grade.
I'm Patrick Cosgrove, I'm a ninth grader.
I'm Christopher King and I'm in 12th grade.
I'm AJ Gonzalez, I'm a senior.
I'm Diana Armano and I'm in 11th grade.
I'm Parma Yon and I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Joshua, I'm in 12th grade.
I'm Gabriela and I'm in 13th grade.
I'm Jackie Moore, I'm in 11th grade.
I'm Cassie Corian and I'm a junior.
I'm Jim Patard and I'm in 10th grade.
I'm Anthony Cortella, I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Jasmine Rodriguez, I'm a junior.
I'm Sophia Armando, I'm in 11th grade.
I'm Zarkees Clans and I'm a senior.
I see VIP program is working.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So all of them were involved with the VIP program last year, every single one.
All right.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Are you guys excited to play for Santa coming in at Great Wolf too? Are you doing that this year?
I hope so. Yeah, I have to do, send a reminder email to see if that's a thing and the Fitchburg tree lighting ceremony, we normally play for, but still trying to track down who's in charge this year. I think it's changed, changed hands. But yeah, we have our winter concert coming on December 12th, that's Thursday night, and the middle school concert will be December 10th here at Memorial. We're going to be doing a big combined stuff for that event as well as seeing our new middle school music program at Long Joe, which is super exciting, and the music program here at Memorial as well. So those are two things coming up. And then, of course, we do the wrapping booth. That's not wrapping presents, you know, not like spitting bars. It's not like you have to come, but we will happily wrap any gift that you have. I've done some very, very bizarre things. It's been 30 years that we've been there at the, at the Whitney Field Mall, we'll be right outside of Macy's, we'll be there from Black Friday until Christmas Eve.
Wow.
Yeah, that's a lot of stuff. And of course, this season is, is very different for us because we've been, we've come very, very close the last two years, but we earned two gold medals during competition season. So as I said, we've come very, very close the last two years, but this year, we finally, finally did it. So consistently, the last six, we have earned a gold medal at championship finals. This year, we've earned two in our season, so it's very exciting for us.
If you use a sports analogy, it looks like you've got a very strong team coming back next year. You're not losing too many key players. That's good, that's good, yeah.
We always will be here regardless.
So the new uniforms?
These are not the new uniforms, no.
These are not?
They have not arrived.
Oh, okay.
Yet.
Yet.
Yeah, but they're, they're, they're on their way.
Did you get enough? Because we want to keep expanding this band.
We ordered 50, there are 41 in band this year, so we will probably need to order even more.
All right, that's our goal.
That's a good thing. Yeah. You guys are awesome.
Okay, we can tap on us, yes, go on.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, thank you. She gets to come over here, she comes with the band. If there are no further reports to give, okay. Have a motion to approve the minutes.
Student report.
Yes, yeah. Been a long day for me today.
Okay, so we're first going to start off with some past events and dates that happened over this past month and a little bit in October too. So we held our annual flag football games on the 7th, where we had the freshmen versus the sophomores and then the juniors versus the seniors and then the seniors versus the faculty, where the faculty completely destroyed us. It was really unexpected, they did very good. We also issued the quarter one report cards on the 15th and FHS announced that 81 members received the Abigail Adams Scholarship, which is really exciting because usually we've had around 60-ish, but 81 students. So the Adams Scholarship provides a tuition scholarship to any Massachusetts public college or university and is valid for up to four years or eight semesters, so it's great. The girl's soccer team played its first playoff game on Monday, November 4th at Tantascua Regional High School. I hope that's how you pronounce the school's name, maybe something else. And then the Fitchburg High Football Team concluded the regular season with five straight wins, including a heart pounding double over 10 game versus Westboro. The team secured a playoff spot and hosted a game at our Crocker Field on the 8th. And Ethan here, who's not present, but he earned the changemaker of the year award from the United Way Youth Venture for his karate for kids from the Youth Venture Summit at Mount Wachusett Community College. So some of you may know, or actually a lot of you, that he does karate for kids, which is through Youth Venture. And for several, several years, him and like his team has been able to come up with a way to make money for full-year karate scholarships to many elementary-age school kids in Fitchburg, so it's cool. Some upcoming events and dates, the all-school play is on the 21st to the 22nd, and then, like Ms. Greenlee said, the breakfast for bands is on the 24th. It's in the Leominster High Cafeteria from 8 to 11:30. And then the Thanksgiving Day Football Game is on the 28th at Crocker Field, Super Excited versus Leominster. And these two things I'm going to talk about, they've already begun, but they're going to be like ongoing. So FHS and LHS began their ninth annual canned food drive to benefit local pantries. We have one at FHS and it's also for homeless shelters nearby. Last year, as a school community, we raised 4,600 canned items, which is really, really cool, so hopefully we can keep that, keep it around there. And not to brag or anything, but it's our eighth year win in a row against them, so it'd be great to keep that going. Another thing, today was Spirit Week, yes?
If we had, you would just bring items up to the high school?
Yes, so either they're to the main office or up to guidance.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. Spirit Week began today, so today was pajama day at high school. We got that like approved and everything from Mr. Roach. And then we decided that usually it's three days, like the week of the pep rally and stuff, but we decided to do all this week and next week, so it's exciting because everyone, we have a great community that like really participates and has really great school spirit. I'm super happy that like, you know, everyone at least participates in at least one of the days, which usually happens, so it's really good. And then finally, we have the AP Saturday session on the 23rd at FHS. Yeah, that's it.
Busy.
Super busy, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions? Very good. I may, I've got Mr. Ghana.
Actually, may I ask a question?
Oh, yes, you may.
I'm sorry. Hannah, do you, in terms of college application process, so how would you say that you, kids feel about that process? Like, do you feel like it's smooth? Do you feel like you all understand what you need to be doing?
So for me personally, I'm, I like to kind of have everything done beforehand, but I had a really hard time finding like a time or like someone to guide me through the process. I know I had to like go out and kind of like have like a sit-down talk with like, you know, one of my guidance counselors, but like it's really hard because we didn't have like a set time or place where like we had a college talk in a way, for seniors especially. I wish that we had like, maybe like, I don't know, like a time in the auditorium where they just got you started, because you know, for me, starting like what colleges to look at, you know, where do you want to go? Some students, I know they still don't even know what majors they're interested in or what they want to do for careers. So I know we've done like college fairs, which has helped, like in our gymnasium where different colleges come in our auditorium, set up a little booth just to like talk about why you should apply here, what's all that about. But the college process, I'm like, are you familiar with Navions?
Yeah.
Common App? That stuff, we had a couple workshops and we had like, we had like Common App, FAFSA type of day when it was open house, so that helped too, the FAFSA, because I know a lot of students still haven't like done that, so it was great. I thought that was great that it was on like the open night, but maybe... great that it was on like the open night, but maybe like, I don't know, have like a day in school for seniors to just get started. Because I know time flies. Like for me, it became November 1st so quick for the deadlines for college applications. I was a little bit overwhelmed myself. So I think if we have like, maybe like a person to like just go for, just for college stuff, that would be really helpful.
Do you think that um they, if you had had, I, so I teach at a high school too, right? And I think that um what I've noticed a lot from students this year was just this sense that they felt like all of a sudden they're supposed to kind of have this direction that they've never really talked about. And uh I think we're trying to do things to correct that. Um but at what point do you think that that conversation, I mean, it'd be great if that conversation was just this fluid thing that you kind of talk about all through school, right? But do you think as juniors, like starting to hear more about, like, where, when do you think it's optimal to hear more about careers or more about like your, like see yourself doing these kinds of things post-high school?
I think junior year. For me, when um Mr. Mercado was still at our, our high school, he did um Honors Academy Seminar, so he told us all about Naviance. And he got like the Honors Academy kids really, really like um aware of what Naviance is, how to do your college appla- application stuff, which is great. But at like, from then till now, we haven't used Naviance at all. Like sophomore year, junior year, we didn't, no one even opened the app. No one like, everyone forgot. So like, I actually started using Naviance just like this last summer. So um I don't.
So you think it could be used more?
I think that like junior year should be the time where like you like enforce it the most, because it's like leading up to senior year. Like as a freshman, I didn't think that Naviance would have mattered in senior year, because it's just so far apart. Like it's great that like they wanted us to start fresh, I mean not fresh, but like start it in the beginning, but like it like made no sense to me, because I forgot everything about it. So I think junior year should be.
That's what I've seen with kids I teach too, yeah.
Do you know, at the high school, um when local, not just local colleges, when they have open houses, is that information received by the high school and posted, so you know that the mound is having something, or Worcester State or Fitchburg State and dates when the different ones are being held?
So um we're lucky to have Mr. Brew, who is really like big known around in the mound. So he's like a great person for all this stuff. He actually informs Chris Carcerano, who is now like taking Mr. Rose's position, and he's always there. So we have great communication from mound to Fitchburg High School. I think that they have like college fairs and all this stuff, and we have, they actually have people come in from them, from like mound and then come here to talk to students. We just recently had um like the one-on-one Mount Wachusett application or like admission thing, where you had like a one-on-one talk of if you're um, you know, admitted or not. So I think that there's a good place from there. And Fitchburg State, I think those two schools and um Fitchburg High have great connections.
You know, one of the things, uh as chairman of the Alumni Association at Fitchburg, for Fitchburg, we get all of the application, you know, wherever you get accepted to. And that's one of the things that we like to promote, is where the kids from Fitchburg get accepted to. The colleges that accepted, not necessarily where they go, but where they get accepted to. So uh our kids do a great job and they get accepted at some wonderful colleges. Sometime because of finances, uh they might not go to a Boston College and they may go to a Fitchburg State, you know, because sometimes the money's just out of reach. But our kids get accepted into some of the most prestigious colleges in the country, which you're gonna do.
Hopefully.
But I would just say, there's a, you know, there, there's a significant amount of kids that will not go to college once they graduate. And um and I think that, you know, we just need to make sure that we're having these conversations about what your options are, because you know, sometimes kids might have wanted to get to a trade, but they weren't, they didn't get in to a trade school, right? And but there are many options for um the trades and training, like you would go on to college, like you could, that you can go on to those technical kinds of training, and that might be an option for a lot of students. And I, I know that we, um I know that the high school and Mr. Roach and uh Mr. Jokel have talked a lot about manufacturing options and what making those connections. Um I just, I, I think it'd be a good conversation to have about what the, what the whole um plan is, right, of, I mean, I don't know, K, right, or pre-K, but even pre-K and K, you're talking about skills that people need, right? Getting along with one another, learning how to communicate. I mean, that you could technically call career training. I, I don't, I'm not saying we should all just be about career training, but I, I really feel like kids are, kids are hampered by not understanding what their options are. Or not even knowing really the full um gamut of jobs that people do. And the more we can do to kind of um communicate that, I think the better.
I was, it was got Bob. Just to build on Jean, what you just talked about, what Hannah was talking about too. Coincidentally, there was a piece in Yesterday's Globe about uh students going to college, whether it be from the suburban communities or urban communities, and what supports and guidance, um guidance counselors uh can give to students to make sure that students are informed of what their options are, not only to get into the school, but once you get to the school, to be able to afford to stay in the school, and also being aware of what scholarship opportunities are available. Um I know we have someone who graduated from Fitchburg High a few years ago, she, who coincidentally, Pete, you mentioned Boston College. She received a fantastic scholarship to, to go there. And uh you know, our, our students, uh we have many over the years who have received full, full scholarships. You know, Jeremy and myself attended an early college uh symposium a few weeks ago at the Doubletree, and I think the whole college landscape is changing for a variety of reasons. Um you know, Fitch, the president of Fitchburg State talked about what Fitchburg State could look like in a few years. A person I sat with from Mount Wachusett Community College said the mound is exploring some vocational programming. Uh you know, HVAC technicians and maybe electricians programming. So the, the landscape is changing rapidly, and, and you're right to say that, well, it's not just about changing it for the workplace, but we want to make sure our students are knowledgeable of the both college and career pathways that are available locally and, and beyond, uh so that they can make the best decisions possible. So, yeah, it's, it's a very, you know, your comments are very timely, and um you know, I, I hope that, you know, the high school guidance counselors are, you know, are giving you the, the um feedback that you need to answer your questions, because there's a lot of questions and um, you know, not only just the short term, but long term, and um it's, it's a tricky process, yeah.
Can I just add on to that real quick? So he mentioned, um you mentioned scholarships. So I feel like um one of our guidance counselors, they updo- update like scholarship opportunities on Naviance a lot, but so many students are so unaware of like how to get into it or like just how to use Naviance. So I think that's how like some of the scholarship opportunities are just like not even looked on, or like not even like, no one even knows about them, because they just don't know how to like navigate through Naviance. And personally, I, like when I open it up, it's like, it's pretty easy to like figure out. It's like, you know, it has those tabs, these has these like um updates and like notifications and all that stuff. So I think maybe students just like don't know how to use Naviance or like how to navigate through it, which is why they're so unaware of what opportunities are available, because there are always updates on, you know, new scholarship, new urgent message, new um, you know, AP Saturday Session, this thing, and everything is like updated on there and put on there. I just don't think students know about it.
Could I ask you, um, do you think that you could talk, um, when you go back to the school about the possibility of surveying the senior class, um to just have a, that you could get some data to kind of look at to see, is this, you know, what percentage of people feel this way, or um is it, is it that they don't know how to do it? Or is it that they are not engaged to do it? You know, I, maybe you could talk about um different survey questions that would get at a, you know, a large sample of what kids are thinking in terms of, because I think that Naviance is incredible. Like my school system doesn't have Naviance, it costs a lot of money, and it's an incredible system. But yeah, if people aren't really utilizing it, um then we should know like how to help people better utilize it. Um I think, I can't believe what I see on Naviance. Like in my system, you have to go hunt for that information yourself. So it's a really good tool, but it'd be really great to know just what maybe the issues are.
So like, do you mean just for like scholarships or like college process?
Maybe both, maybe both, because like what you're saying is that you have this other part of it that tells you about scholarships. But I'm just curious, because a lot of it could just be seniors just aren't putting in the time to try, right? Because they're busy or they're just not thinking and they're not paying attention to deadlines or something, but um, but it'd be good to know that.
Definitely.
Thanks.
I, I may be wrong, but I, I think another possibility is that some students, once they leave school, don't have access to the internet to search products like this. And that could be a very real possibility.
Do students have like access to their school account after they graduate? Do you know? Does anyone know?
Yeah, after, up until two years afterwards. So I could still log on to mine of Naviance when I was a sophomore in college.
I can tell you that our school, anything you did that's connected to your email, you have no access to like the week after you graduate.
Wow.
So kids should know that about their Google Docs.
Yeah.
Like make sure that they're putting, that's something maybe you could talk to your class about, because any papers they've written that are on their school account, they're not gonna be able to access probably. Maybe you guys can answer that, but I, our kids can't.
Yeah, we'd, I think we'd have to get back to when, when access ends for students to.
There is a date, I don't know exactly what the date is. I remember, I mean, Spiny, our technology director said a student just emailed her for access to the account, so it does happen, but I'm not sure of the date.
Yeah. Just get everything you've written that you really like and put it somewhere.
And I, I think if I can just add, you know, um there's, I think what's out there on the internet in terms of, you know, going through Naviance, but I think um my general advice to um the graduates here in Fitchburg would be, there's, there's local uh grant, um scholarship opportunities, the Alumni Association. I know there's a scholarship at the city called the Cadre Fund, uh and there are others out there locally. And uh, and also I think sometimes there are people who either presently or most recently that have some type of relationship with the high school, have helped students get scholarships um that are very competitive as well. So I guess my general advice would be to keep your eyes and ears wide open, because I know some of these scholarships are announced repeatedly, and um, you know, sometimes we don't, there's not a lot of applicants, even though there is, there's a lot of people who have the need, so.
One thing, we mentioned the uh internet and at the Cape, Comcast mentioned.
Yes.
It's like almost free internet.
Yeah.
And uh, what was it, like 990?
995 a month or something like that, yeah. And that project, that program's been available in Fitchburg, I think, for many years now, because I remember when that first came to town.
And I think for, for some, for some students, it's even a computer is available for.
You're, you're, you're speaking a lot about this one excellent program and um, and how you've used it. Do you have to go individually to a counselor to um learn about this, or how did you? You said Mr. Mercado introduced you to it, but was it like to you individually or to a certain group of kids?
It was, so we have the Honors Academy in FHS.
It was to the Honors Academy.
This is our Honors Academy class.
So are you mostly speaking about the Honors Academy when you say most kids don't know about it, or they forget about it, or are you?
I think I'm talking about everyone.
So you'd like it, you'd like it to be expanded to, to everybody?
Yeah, because I know some students not in the HA, they actually just like found about it probably like end of junior year.
So it sounds to me like it might be good if it were introduced in class somehow, or a few minutes of class from junior, beginning junior year on for everybody to.
Yeah.
Mr. Ghana, uh it's just, you probably all got the email, but could you just mention about what's happening at Crocker Elementary School on Friday? Because it's Fitchburg High School students involved, if I.
So Barnes and Noble is running a rivalry program, um pitting Fitchburg versus Lemmonster. Um they're trying to get, you know, the city, both cities hyped up for the game. They've asked us to try to promote a little bit, and you know, we've, we've, we had the idea of, of having some of our student athletes um come into some schools um with administration and do some coloring projects on the rivalry. It's got, you know, a photo of both Fitchburg and Lemmonster helmets. Um you know, just promoting the rivalry. We did it at McKay last week, and I'll tell you, just seeing the faces of the kids being able to color with not only our administration, but the student athletes. You know, we had the, the star football players, three of them there, and you know what? You see the big kids up there compared to little kids, and it's just, it really hits you in the heart to realize that these kids hope to get to that point, you know, somewhere in their lives. And you know, if you can just spread a little bit of the rivalry a little bit more, you know, down to those lower levels, I mean, it's just, it's incredible. So we're doing that at, at Crocker um on Friday. We're also doing it at South Street tomorrow. Um so it's just another way. And then on Saturday, we're, you know, um Barnes and Noble is hoping to have everybody, you know, in Fitchburg and Lemmonster to come there. There's a book signing by a local author, Mark Badanza. Um they're gonna be also voting on who you think's gonna win the game, Fitchburg or Lemmonster. So they're trying to, Barnes and Noble's trying to make a big day of the event, and we're obviously, you know, promoting from, from our school system and, you know, how important this rivalry is to us, and you know, stemming from kindergarten all the way up to, you know, 12th grade.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think these programs are so important, as we talked about in resource meeting about with enrollment, and how we are increasing our enrollment, how we have decreased the number of students that go into Monty Tech. We're keeping more of our good students at Fitchburg High School. I think we've had a drop in kids leaving for school choice. So I think all these programs that we do and get these kids the VIP program, you see some 7th and 8th graders here, uh makes a big difference, big difference. So well done, Mr. Joe. Okay, if we can approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No executive session, communication, um, and we are going to table the report from the MASC until December 2nd. The mayor is here. The next one will be the superintendent's evaluation. You've received, you received that. Uh I have sat down a couple of times with Mr. Jokel on the evaluation. He has all of your sheets uh that you filled out with all of your comments on it. I will read the evaluation. We have completed the evaluation of Acting Superintendent Robert Jokel for the time period from October 18th through June 2019. The evaluation was based on a review of the Acting Superintendent's self-evaluation and each committee member's assessment of the Acting Superintendent's performance. The school committee conducted its review of the Acting Superintendent following the guidelines of the Superintendent's Evaluation Rubric, whose four main evaluation standards are instructional leadership, management and operation, family and community engagement, professional culture. Under each standard, there are many performance indicators which are more specific to each area, based on aggregate school committee ranking of each standard indicator. The reviewer assigned an average of 1 to 5 to each indicator, then total all indicator scores within a standard, and then calculated an average score for each standard. Based on the scale, with a score of 5 exemplary being the highest possible score, the Acting Superintendent received average standard scores for each standard as follow. Instructional leadership, 4.88 out of a possible 5. Management and operation, 4.64 out of a possible 5. Family and community engagement, 4.47. Professional culture, 4.65. School committee members acting, on Acting Superintendent Jokel's performance include the following. Standard 1, setting the goal of being best urban district in the state, establishing a cohesive leadership team on the school and district-wide level for, to reach for it, and introducing a new chief intervention and innovation officer. All are indicative of Mr. Jokel's commitment to ensuring best instructional practices were aligned and with expectation. were aligned with expectation. The team selected by the superintendent seemed exceptionally highly motivated and competent. Leadership changes made at one school moved the school from accountability status in 2019. Standard two, Superintendent Jokla hired a new team, including a business manager, the innovation officer, a new assistant superintendent, as well as five new principals. Most were hired from within district, which correlates to the school committee's desire to focus on hiring people who were clearly committed to Fitchburg Public Schools. In the time for teaching and learning indicators, one school committee member commented that the school calendar was modified to make the system more optional. Standard three, the addition of Instagram and constant updates on social media is great. We recognize the Acting Superintendent's effort in having more documents communicated in Spanish and we look forward to the additional efforts to further improve two-way communication within the community. Standard four, the changes in top administration starting last November and continuing on making such a difference in the schools. The professional development opportunities being provided is important and we look forward to hearing more of our efforts to build a teaching leadership pipeline. Summary, we look forward to supporting Superintendent Jokla and the team as they continue to improve teaching and learning across our district, build the professional culture and narrow achievement opportunities and gaps. Good God, Peter Stevens. I also would like to, the mayor would like me to communicate how pleased he is with Mr. Jokla's performance and the direction that our school system is going in. And Mr. Mayor Dean Attali again throws his continued support behind the school committee in trying to make the school system the best that it can be. Thank you, Mr. Joe.
Question?
This is so, this is exciting, this new arrangement and with high hopes and excellence and all of that. And how soon and how often will we hear how, how we're proceeding on that in this, in this forum?
I can, yeah, so I guess first of all, thank you for the kind comments. And I really want to emphasize, as I said early on, this is a team approach. So whether it be the people who are here at the table or representing all of the teachers in the school district and paraprofessionals, custodians, food service, everyone, that it is a team effort to improve our teaching and learning across the district. So one of the things that I've communicated before is that I'll be presenting my entry plan findings to the school committee. I'll say I hope to do that in December, but there's only one meeting in December, so it might be the first meeting in January. And then after that, that'll really lay the foundation for some of the actions that we'll probably be taking for next school year with the, well, pending passage of the Student Opportunity Act. It's a real opportunity to hit the reset button here in Fitchburg to meet the needs of, of all our students from teaching and learning and as we're talking about, you know, providing, you know, opportunity gaps and, and opportunities. So whether it's band or athletics or academics, we could have a substantial opportunity to improve the district next year. So as soon as I'm ready to, with all my information, it really is just some compilation stage, I plan to present that to the school committee.
Mr. Jokla and I also, is it next Monday?
Monday.
Monday will be going to a superintendent's evaluation conference at Esabet.
Yeah, but I, I was, I was thinking, it's exciting to watch like, you know, like a baby takes his first steps and we're all excited and then you like to watch the progress. So there were such high hopes expressed in the presentations that all of the gentlemen gave, ladies gave. And I was just wondering if we could be kept in the, in the loop as to, you know, I think there was a great access on compilation of statistics of what you excel in there and have hope to bring to other schools. I would like to hear frequently if things are going well or what obstacles we run in, running into or...
Yeah, we, we, we plan to continue, you know, keeping the school committee and, and the community in general apprised. And, you know, F A T V is a, a great avenue for us to do that.
Yeah, yeah, right. I mean, more than like once or twice a year.
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely.
I will say, I'm sorry, Jim, is that the update that you send to us, I think it's weekly, unless you're traveling. And I think in terms of the agendas that we've had over the past, I guess, year, and I think as things are happening, they are included and presented to us in the agenda. And I don't think everything happens all at once, but I know that as steps are being made, it comes forward to, not only to this committee, but also to the public who watch school committee meetings on F A T V.
I have a question.
Jane?
I don't know. You're going to a conference and it would be good to find out because I, some of the things that are on the rubric are really difficult for us to know, right? So for instance, that, you know, you ensure that all teachers design effective and rigorous standard-based units of instruction consisting of well-structured lessons with measurable outcomes. How, how are we supposed to see that, right? Like, so I'm kind of curious about that because I've felt like that for the years that I've been on the school committee, thinking that, you know, we don't really know what your supervision and alignment is with the people that you evaluate as well. So maybe it would be helpful just to have some more guidelines about that because obviously, you know, things, I have to say, I'm just going to add that, I mean, I love the goal, like to be the best urban district, you know? I think that that's, that's the kind of bold goal that we need and that we can be. And, but there are things in here that really I wouldn't know how to observe. So I'm just, you can talk about, you may not have to talk about it now, but...
No, it's, 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 it's an accurate comment, yeah. And, and I think, you know, you know, the superintendent works with and through, you know, the assistant superintendent and, you know, with the newly created position of the chief innovation and intervention, innovation officer, the business manager and really the principal team and the, the special education department, E L L learners, athletics, to, to, to drive, you know, improvement in teaching and learning. And, you know, while at some level we have the formal scorecard of whatever the standardized test is, we also have others, you know, kind of, I'll say informal scorecards in terms of are our students coming to school? Do they feel safe? Do they feel supported? You know, are we providing them good guidance as they, you know, make their plans to pursue either career or further their education? So there's, there's the hard metrics and then there's the, I guess, the soft metrics, so to speak. And I think across the district and kind of, you know, whether it be vertically across grade levels or horizontally within grades, you know, to provide students what the skills that they will need once they, they leave our, our buildings and...
I know that specifically when we do this for our own self-evaluations and, and then when you have to report the data that you would use to support your findings of yourself, right? So that, I'd be curious, like as you go to this conference, like what, what could we do as a committee to help ensure that we are collecting the data that would be helpful to kind of see that? So, because I think that is hard, it's hard for people to do that on their own.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
But if we have like systematic checks or forms or, and, but anyway, I don't want to, we don't have to talk about that. I just was hoping maybe you could ask that at the conference.
One thing maybe I'll bring up is that Sally and I have been talking about school committee self-evaluation, which we really haven't done.
Yeah.
And so we're going to work on, work on that for school committee self-evaluation.
Because you want to be evidence-based, right? You want to be so, anyway, but I think you've done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
So...
Public comment?
So...
Five minutes.
Becky Leyva, Assistant Principal over at M K Arts Academy. And tonight she drew the short straw to talk about the field trip to the, the White Mountains. So the mic is yours.
I guess the good news is I get to go as well. So we're looking to start the planning process for our sixth grade trip to the White Mountains with the Appalachian Mountain Club, looking to go to Joe Dodge Lodge in Pinkham Notch, which is right at the base of Mount Washington. It's absolutely gorgeous there. May 27th through the 29th, which is after I'm cast. Really, it's a great opportunity for our kids. It's a, it's, they, they do a really nice job of bringing the science curriculum alive for our students. We work closely with the educational coordinators to ensure their curriculum aligns with our frameworks and our standards, which is great. But even beyond that, the, the social skills, the leadership skills, the, you know, all of those self-resilience, those kind of skills are, it's amazing to watch the students to grow in those areas. I got the opportunity to go last year and it really was an amazing experience to watch our students grow on that trip. So as far as costs, I mean, a lot of that is going to be, to be determined based on transportation. We do plan to use first student. We will have opportunities for fundraising for students so that that can help offset some of the costs. And we are mandated to have a 10 to one ratio of students to staff on the trip. That's mandated by A M C. And all staff will have Q R's. We have to be med-certified, C P R, all of those, those things. And in addition, they go even beyond. Their, their guides and their leaders are all wilderness-trained first aid responders as well. So in addition to all of our medical training, they take it a step further for us as well. So, I mean, I don't know, it's way less than five minutes.
Actually, you're not in public comment. You have your own, you could talk as long as you wanted to. I'm saying.
Public comment. Any questions?
No.
I think it's great. Could I have a motion to take this action item out of...
Make a motion to...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have a motion to 1242 dash nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Come back when you have different fundraising activities or spread it to the superintendent so we know what they are so we can be involved in helping make this happen.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's always great, the fundraising always helps so much.
Okay, Mr. Jokla, budget donations.
Tonight we have a couple donations for the school committee to accept. First one is a donation of five bins of sugar pumpkins, estimated value of $1,000. Pumpkins are given to art teachers, classroom teachers and students in the 21st Century Program to create our design projects. That's from Jim and Alison Latanzi, owners of Hollis Hill Farm, Fitchburg, Mass. Then we have donation of new to gently used children books, estimated value of $240. Books will be donated to the M K Arts Academy classrooms for the students to enjoy. It's from an anonymous donor. Then third, we have the donation of three Lyman signs, estimated value of $935. Two exterior and one interior sign with picture symbols for children with autism for playground and cafeteria. These signs will support students with autism to communicate, to communication while on the playground and in the cafeteria, and that's from Lyman Signs. Then we have another donation of 30 used Chromebooks purchased from Monty Tech, estimated value of $30. Chromebooks will be used by Crocker students in kindergarten and first grade, and that's from the Crocker P T O. And turn it over to Mr. Shalfo for the grants that were submitted.
Just to comment on the donation for the signs, and Mr. Gray again had asked me to follow up. So we will be purchasing two additional, one or two additional signs for the cafeteria at Long Joe as well from that. And we have a couple of grants for submission. The targeted assistance grants, which at Fitchburg High School is $30,000, at Long Joe is 30, and at M K is $50,000. And this is to help to support our turnaround efforts. We have two grants for, to be accepted. We get the Safe Roads to School Signs and Lanes Grant for 5,400. And that's to help build infrastructure in and around the Reinhold Elementary School area. And then we have the Barr Foundation Grant, which we are partnering with Gardner Public Schools. They are the fiscal agent. It's the amount of $200,000 and it's to build leadership pipeline within districts.
Can I just make a couple notes on the agenda? One was the under-budget items. Both the items are listed on the agenda for the indirect cost reimbursement, $379,709 in the E-rate supplemental school appropriation. Until both of those are approved...
Would the table those?
Table till the December meeting. And that would be action item number 19 dash 1249, number 1920 on tonight's agenda.
And the E-rate though, too?
And E-rate too, because while the city council finance committee approved last Tuesday, they have to receive the final vote tomorrow night at city council before we can vote to accept.
So I'd make a motion to table 19 dash 1249 and 19 dash 1250?
Second? No, no, wait, wait. We don't want to, we don't want to table 1250. That's, that's, that's a warrant.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, just 1249.
One of the action items was already removed.
That's what I was asking about the E-rate. I'm sorry. Yeah. So I'll make a motion to table 19 dash 1249?
Second?
All in favor?
There's only one, I told you.
Okay, that's, that's the only one. We have a motion to bundle 191243 through 191248.
So moved? But just, I want to say a word about the Latanzi family who donated the five bins of sugar pumpkins. This is one of those extraordinarily colorful donations that I know a lot of our kids, everyone goes trick-or-treating. A lot of kids, hundreds and hundreds of kids went out on Main Street. But for our kids to have their own pumpkin to decorate from the generosity of this wonderful family that is doing farming in Fitchburg, I, I just, I, I take my hat off. They are wonderful and they have great maple syrup up there. They're open on the weekends. Please go up and say thank you for helping Fitchburg Public Schools with something only they could have done. And no one else could have, would have had five bins of sugar pumpkins. So thank you, Latanzi family.
And they make excellent apple cider donuts, I'm just saying. I believe they're very healthy as well. I'm just saying.
We have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have... Lawrence?
Make a motion to accept item 19 dash 1250 and item 19 dash 1251.
All in favor?
Aye.
No executive session. Motion for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Bring Mr. Varell in for Friday at Crocker.